Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, March 4th, 2015 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from February 18th, 2015. Is there a motion, please?
It's Chair and I move that we accept the minutes of February 18th, 2015. It's written to the record.
Second?
It's moved in second. If all want a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passed? No? Jerry, were you not here?
I was not here.
You were not here, so you have to abstain from it. So I guess it's four...how many are here tonight? Five. I really should pay attention to stuff like that. Next up is consent items on our agenda, but we have none tonight, so that takes us to our site plans. And there is one, SP-6413-2014, the Devlin property, at 11506 Game Preserve Road in the MXD zone. This is final site plan, and presenting from staff is Greg Mann. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening, Commissioners. This application is for SP-6413-2014. I'm requesting final site plan approval for the development of approximately 3.23 acre parcel. This application is based upon schematic development plan, SDP 4560-2014, approved on November 3rd, 2014. The property is located south and west of the Parklands at Watkins Mill Town Center Development, and north of the CSX rail line. Additionally, the property is ZONE MXD, and is currently undeveloped. As approved under SDP 4560-2014, this application proposes the construction of 19 front-load townhouse units, and will connect to the adjacent Parklands development by continuing Caulfield Lane, as seen here on your screens now, through to Forest Preserve Drive, right here. And with that, I'd like to turn over the presentation to the applicant, Gary Unterberg, from Rogers Consulting, to present the application and answer any questions the question may have.
All right, great. Hi, Gary.
Good evening. Gary Unterberg with Rogers Consulting. And I'd like to do a few announcements or a few introductions. Jessica Falaroni is with me at the table with NV Homes.
Good evening.
And also with NV Homes in the audience is Chuck Hart and Ken Brown. Steve Nardella is representing Classic Community this evening.
Good evening.
And Steve Eckert could not be here, he sends his greetings. We also have Josh Curley with Phoenix Noise &amp; Vibration, and then Jules Krimsky with Rogers, also sitting in this.
Now, we have the whole audience accounted for.
That's our team here, and I guess I'll...
Thank you all.
...go please. Is that as far as it's going to go?
Yeah, hold on a minute. Let's get you one. Sorry.
What I'd like to do is just walk you through the site. We're talking about a little over three acre site, which is the Devlin property, which is along the CSX tracks, which are at the bottom of the page. The brand-new Watkins Mill Road, the bridge over the tracks and Watkins Mill Road, which is built, is through the middle of the site. It's built about to here. 270 is the top of the page. The future interchange, Watkins Mill, is located right here, also at the top of the page. As mentioned before, Forest Preserve Drive is how we get to the site, which is the left of the page. And with that, and this shows the full build-out of Watkins Mill Town Center. Currently, there are almost all 436 residential units built. There's a handful, probably about 15 or so, single-family homes that are still under construction, or have not been built, right adjacent to the site. And then there's a couple townhouse sticks that are under construction right now. Just walked you through the site. This is the clubhouse. I think we've showed some of these pictures before, but just to update everyone, this is the clubhouse. The pool facility, this is an example of some of the two-over-twos that have been built, four stories. There's some of the townhomes, which are three stories, some have the rooftop deck option. This is a picture of Forest Preserve Drive, which are some of the single families that you will see when you drive to the Devlin site. As mentioned before, this is the SDP that was approved last November. We also submitted the site plan last November, and we're here tonight for approval. This is the site plan, couple facts and figures on the site plan. Little over three acres, 19 townhouse lots, four sticks of townhouses. They're all front-loaded, all with two-car garages, all with two-car parking in the driveway, except for one unit. Lot 13, which is on the left-hand side, the driveway is just a little bit too short to count as a parking space.
Lucky 13.
Lucky 13, yes. Overall, with the 2.5 spaces, parking spaces per unit required, which would be a total of 48, we're providing a total of 69, 3.6 parking spaces per unit, and that's only counting the two-car garage as one space. In that grand total, there's a total of 14 spaces, parallel spaces, that are parked Couple things that were discussed at the SDP level in the approval, but particularly the relationship to the CSX tracks, which we're right next to. These sections were prepared to show how the railroad track is approximately 24 feet, in some cases a little bit more, lower than our site. Our site raises up from the tracks. The closest townhouse to the property line is about 64, 65 feet. The tracks are actually another 30 feet, plus or minus, from the property line. The townhouse that's furthest away from the property line is about 185 feet, and that's the ones in the middle. We've saved the existing forest in the middle, and what I'm going to do is go to the next slide, and this led to the discussion on noise from the railroad. This is what was approved, well, this is a version of what was approved with the SDP, but then submitted with the site plan. All the rear yards, the patio areas, meet or are substantially lower than the 65 decibel requirement. The front yards are either a little bit lower, which particularly in the middle here, or just above the 65 decibel level, particularly on the two corners. We are saving the trees in the middle, and then we're showing a six-and-a-half-foot-high noise fence that's along both ends where the road comes closer to the property line. This is a detail, that six-and-a-half-foot-high fence. The one study with the SDP showed a 10-foot-high fence. We went back and looked at that with the site plan. The six-and-a-half-foot-high fence is the typical fence that's been built out at Parklands. It's a wood fence, board-on-board. So we went back and Phoenix looked at what it would, the impact or no impact, six-and-a-half foot versus 10-foot, and there really is no difference with the 10-foot or six-and-a-half foot fence. Couple other things with overall to the site. We will be annexing into the Parklands HOA. There's already been some preliminary discussions to that extent. The other thing that we are working with, there is documentation with the direct facilities, the pool, the tennis courts, the tennis court, one tennis court, the tot lots. Per the Montgomery County standards, the additional 19 units with the 436 units already established, all meet the requirements of the recreation needs. The other thing with the HOA, we will be subject to the Parklands Design Guidelines, so all the architecture has gone forward to meet the design guidelines for Parklands. This is the overall site, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica, so she can walk you through the specifics of the architecture.
Can I ask you a quick question? It's usually what Lynn asks me a question, but while you're on the site plan, just going back to the site real quick, the six-and-a-half-foot-high fence, just to be clear, it's only at those sort of ends of the site where you're closest to the tracks, is that right?
Yeah, it's the left-hand side.
Yeah.
Adjacent to the road. This is all tree-safe in the middle.
So what happens in the middle relative to just fences for security?
You basically, you're talking about whether it's fenced or not?
Yeah.
There's basically trees, existing trees there, between the road and the...
Right, but could somebody walk down to the tracks or up from the tracks without having to go across a fence, or help a fence?
They could, yeah.
They could.
If they wanted to walk through the forest area.
And there's no...CXX doesn't require some kind of a separation or some kind of a fence?
No, they don't.
Okay. All right.
Hi, as Gary mentioned, I'm Jessica Falaroni. I am General Manager of Land Acquisition and Development, and I'm going to be going over a number of architectural standards and features in the property. I'm going to go ahead and give you guys a brief overview of the product that we'll be building. We'll review the front and rear elevations, and while doing that, not only will I touch on architecture, but I'll be highlighting some of the building materials that will be used in relation to sound mitigation, the energy efficiency of our homes, and then also looking at the rear elevations. And then we'll go ahead and move on to side elevations and color schemes following that. So as Gary mentioned, this is the concept plan, or the site plan that you've seen a few times. We'll be building a total of 19 units in four buildings here. We have three five-unit sticks and a four-unit stick. All of our units will be built at a standard of 24-foot wide by 50-foot depth. And again, we'll offer a two-car front-entry garage, and offer just over 3,100 square feet finished, on three living levels. The units here are primarily pre-designed in regards to structural options and exterior features. So as we go through the architecture, what you'll see of the elevations and color schemes have already been predetermined, as shown here today. Units are going to be offered at the standard 50-foot depth versus offering options for different types of extensions. And six-foot rear decks are included on all of the units, with an option to upgrade to a 10-foot deck. Other than the option to upgrade the depth of the deck, all structural options in the home are set, and the only other structural feature that will be offered as an option to our customers will be a fourth-level attic, which you'll see on some of the architectural drawings. As we move on to review the architectural features, as Gary mentioned, I think it's important to note that not only do we design the architecture for these units based on preliminary feedback from staff, but also in accordance with the approved design guidelines for the Parklands HOA. So moving on to the front elevations, here you can just see the front elevations for all four buildings, side-by-side. As you noticed on the site plan, units 13 through 17 and 18 through 22 are adjacent to each other, and then coming down the other side of the site, you have units 23 through 27, and 28 through 31. Some of the key features that you'll see here in regards to architecture, obviously, are the full brick front. We'll be using 30-year architectural shingles from the Tamco Vintage Series line. This is consistent with what's being offered in the Parklands today. Consistent with the guidelines, all shingles will be either chestnut or charcoal, and they'll alternate per building. So that's why you see the charcoal here on units 13 through 17 versus the chestnut on 18 through 22. We use the two-over-two light window, which is actually what's being used on the 20-foot townhome products being built today, and is an approved window under the design guidelines. We'll be offering the upgrade carriage-style garage door with windows here. That's actually being used on our rear-entry garage units now as well, but obviously more visible with these front-entry garage units. Similarly, you're going to notice that there's limited repetition of both color schemes and elevations. Per the guidelines, no two adjacent units can have the same color scheme, and no more than two units in a single-building stick can have a repeated elevation or color scheme, and none of these do. Some other small features that you'll notice in regards to front elevation architecture will be that all windows and trim will be matching and will be white. Gutters and downspouts will be painted, will be brown aluminum, and that's consistent with current community guidelines. Garage doors will not be painted, but will also be white to match the trim color. And gas meters will be located on the front of the units due to the front-entry garage condition. On renderings, unfortunately, I don't have the ability to reference gas meters and render that, but sitting here in between the front door and garage door will be your gas meter locations. They are actually shown on the architecture elevations, which are in Exhibits 12A through D in your staff packet, but will be screened with landscaping on the front elevation. Moving on to the rear elevations of the homes, here you're going to see, again, side-by-side views of all of the rear elevations. Some of the key architectural features you'll notice here are, we'll be offering full hardy plank rear elevations, similar to the front, no repetition on adjacent units, the same color won't be used any more than twice in one stick. And as I mentioned previously, this is where you're going to see the six-foot rear deck that's included, and you can see that here, shown on the units. The deck will actually have white vinyl rails, and we'll use Tamco Evergreen decking in the color weatherwood. This is consistent with the guidelines and in what was used on all existing townhomes in the community. As I mentioned before, the customers here, if the site plan allows, will have the option to upgrade to a 10-foot-deep deck opposed to the six-foot deck that's standard. As I also mentioned previously, here you're going to see some of the attic shown on here. We tried to show a variation, just so you could see different conditions, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on that fourth-level attic later, but I'll highlight some of the architectural details of that actual structural option as we move forward. Some of the other smaller features that aren't highlighted on these plans are at the top of the units here, or where you're going to have your plumbing and mechanical stacks. Again, we have difficulty rendering that. And at the bottom of the units here, to the side of the windows, is where you're going to have your HVAC units. Similar to the front elevations, all windows and doors will be white to match the trim The next here, you're just going to see some highlighted front and rear elevations. They're a little bit larger and easier to see, and this is here of units 13 through 17. You can see the front elevation and rear elevation. While we're on here and looking at these elevations again, in the following three slides, I figured it was a good time to kind of point out some of the building materials that we're going to be using related to sound mitigation in this community. Back in November of 2014, NV Homes had Phoenix evaluate the proposed 19 townhomes here on the Devlin property, and we determined what additional building components would be necessary in order to meet the City of Gaithersburg's residential interior noise guideline. So really, what we were looking for is, in comparison to what we use as our standard building materials, what else did we need to do to meet that 45 decibel level? Phoenix ultimately determined that in addition to our standard building construction, we needed to use upgraded windows and foyer entry doors in order to maintain interior noise levels at the necessary limit for the project. However, exterior wall modifications and/or upgraded patio doors on the interior of the units, which Gary previously touched on, were not necessary on this site. Just to highlight some of the standard building materials that Phoenix evaluated and based on, in some communities, you'll notice we will build with either siding vinyl fronts or hardy plank fronts. Here, we're doing a standard brick front, which ultimately has a higher rating in regards to noise mitigation. On the side end units, which we'll look at shortly, there's a minimum of a brick water table with a full hardy plank side above that, and some of our high-visibility units actually offer a full brick side. And again, we have full hardy plank on rear elevations as well. So those are our standard building features, and in addition to that, based on Phoenix's recommendation, some of the enhanced building materials that will be used on the site to mitigate noise further are upgrade windows and foyer entry doors, as I mentioned previously. In giving a brief overview of those materials, basically the best way to explain how they're different from the standard materials is to compare their STC ratings. And an STC rating simply stands for a Sound Transmission Class rating, and is a single-number value used to indicate a building element's ability to reduce noise transmission from one side of the element to the other. So typically, in our homes, we will use a standard window, whether it's an operating window or a fixed window, that has a 26 STC rating or a 24 STC rating. In this case, we're actually using the second upgrade window offered by Plyjam, our manufacturer, that has an STC rating of anywhere between 31 and 32, as recommended by Phoenix. Furthermore, casement windows, casement operating windows within the homes, will be offered as an upgrade as well. That's a first upgrade. They actually don't make a second upgrade on those, and we'll have a 32 STC rating versus a standard 28. And as I mentioned before, and in addition, the foyer entry doors will be upgraded. So normally, we're using a fiberglass door with a foam core. The upgraded door essentially offers a fiberglass door with a particleboard core for further noise mitigation, and that has an STC rating of 30 versus a standard door at 22. So those are some of the things that we're using in addition to our standard materials to meet the requirements as outlined by Phoenix, and to further mitigate noise in the interior of the home.
So what is the, ultimately then, what do you, how do you knock, how much have you knocked down the noise inside? What do your calc's tell you by going with those upgrades?
I'll actually defer to...
Well, the 45 decibels is the interior noise cap.
Is the cap.
Or we're going to be below that. The outside noise...
How far below that?
That's something we can ask Josh with, and as we go forward, I know there's two conditions, which is also what's being done currently at the Parklands. They do an inspection and note that all the materials that were specified are being built, and then sign off on the end.
Okay, I was trying to get a read on whether or not this was sort of just squeaking under the minimum requirement, or if it was a healthy margin there for things like workmanship and, you know, the occasional things that don't quite meet up.
Yeah, if you want Josh to come up now, we can, or if you want to...
Well, you can finish your...
Do you want to finish and address them?
You can go ahead and finish.
Sure, and I think we have a chart that Josh prepared at the very end of this presentation as well. Okay. So moving forward, you can just see, again, the front and rear elevations for 18 to 22, and I was asked to highlight some of our energy efficiency standards that we're building within our homes. So as many people don't know, over the last year, NVR actually adopted their own internal corporate-wide energy efficiency program known as Build Smart. Essentially, it's the NVR version of Energy Star. But as Energy Star standards continue to change and fluctuate, as a corporation, we're large enough that we decided to adopt our own internal program. What that means to a customer is, on average, our homes right now have a Hurst score in the mid-50s, right around 55, in comparison to a typical resale that often averages in the 130s, or a non-energy-efficient new home that often averages in the 100s. Ultimately, what that equates to is that a new NV home today, built under the Build Smart standards, is typically 75% more efficient than a resale home, or 45% more efficient than a non-energy-efficient new home. We continue to adopt many of the standards and practices that we did while we were working under the actual Energy Star program, including conducting random tests, like blower door test and duct testing on sample sets of our homes, to ensure that the efficiency of the building envelope and the systems within, in the home are not compromised, and we are building to those standards.
Random meaning what, this applies to this development?
So typically, we'll test one in seven homes, and it's completely random. So we never guaranteed our customer that their home will be tested, but we test every so many homes that are under construction in order to make sure that our practices are, in fact, delivering the results that the company expects.
You're the builder, and you're testing your own work.
We hire third parties to do the testing.
Pick a random house?
On a random house, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's similar to what we were doing under the Energy Star program as well. Energy Star wasn't always requiring testing of every single home. So moving forward, you just have the remainder of the front and rear elevations. Here we have units 23 through 27, and on the next side, units 28 through 31. And then, on the last side here, you just have some sample rear elevations. So as I mentioned previously, this is going to be the one structural option that will be offered as an optional feature for our customers to select. The fourth-level attic with a rooftop terrace essentially will offer our customers about 508 additional square feet of interior living space, and that comes in the form of a large bonus room or bedroom, a full bathroom, and then also a 13-foot by 23-foot exterior rooftop terrace for outdoor living. And that's what you see here. What this is showing is, since this will be an option for the customers, the locations of the attics won't necessarily be predetermined. So on the slides here, you can see here what the condition will look like if, you know, two units that are not adjacent select it. Here, if all units that are adjacent select an attic, or even just two in the middle, and what the roofline would look like if no units in any particular building will select it.
So you'll build these out then to order? You're not going to do any spec sticks, is that right?
That's correct. It's our practice not to spec out the units, and what we've found is, trying to predetermine where attics are difficult, you kind of narrow people down, and you risk losing a purchaser if you're out of units with attics, or vice versa. So we will build these to order. And here, as you can see, this is the attic. This is obviously the rooftop terrace that you see up here. In between the rooftop terrace, it's hard to see on a rear elevation, but you have a privacy wall, and that's about four-and-a-half feet tall. So they do have a good element of privacy in between units. And the overhang, you can see a little bit of shadowing here, is just about two feet. So this hangs about two feet over. It's a limited overhang. That way, you're not losing exterior light coming in from these windows, or, you know, making your owner's bedroom on the rear of that elevation dark. So moving forward to side elevations, this diagram is just going to show you what end units have been designated as high-visibility, and which ones have been designated as low-visibility. So as you can see here with the red arrows, units 13, 22, 23, and 31 have been designated high-visibility. They do have a good amount of exposure, and even here in the middle do have more exposure. Your units that are facing another building, so 17, 18, 27, and 28, have been identified as low-visibility units, and on the following slide here, you'll be able to see the difference between the two. So based on the site plan, what we've shown you, number 13 here is a high-visibility unit, and it offers a full brick side. In addition, you'll have nine standard windows on the high-visibility units. On your basement level, one of them will be in your garage, the other two in the rec room. Up here on the main level, you'll have one in the dining room, two in the family room, and one in a secondary bedroom up here, and then two in the owner's bedrooms. We were able to offer the maximum amount of windows on these, since, again, they're not facing another unit, in order to avoid the windows looking into windows. So those are the primary features of a high-visibility side, and on the low-visibility side here, I placed the two elevations that would be next to each other here on the slide together. So as I mentioned previously, we will offer a brick water table with a full hardy plank side, and what we've done is offered alternating window locations. So on the high-visibility, if you notice, you have two windows in each of these rooms, a rec room, a family room, and an owner's bedroom. And what we've done here is, this unit here has the three along the backside of the house. The unit directly adjacent to it will have the three in the middle. What we're trying to do here is, per the design guidelines, they encourage minimal windows looking into windows if possible, especially when the buildings are close. We felt it was necessary to keep the light in the bedroom number three in the dining room, so those will be the only two windows that will face one another in between those units. Also on these low-visibility sides, consistent with existing Parklands practices, will be the meter banks. Those are also shown on your architectural renderings, but they'll be located in the front of the unit, right around here. Those will only be on the low-visibility sides, not the high-visibility sides. And then lastly, while we're looking at the side elevations here, you can just see some of the different side elevations if an end unit homeowner were to select the attic. This is what it looks like from the side versus down here, what it would look like without an attic chosen. And moving on from there, we're just going to do a brief overview of the color schemes. The color schemes for the Devlin property have been designed based on existing approved guidelines within the community, and also to complement the existing color schemes, particularly those of the single-family homes that are being built directly behind them. All of our brick is manufactured by Boral Brick, and has the standard community mortar color of buff. All our hardy plank will be manufactured by James Hardy, similar to other units in the community, and front door colors are all McCormick paint colors. So essentially, what we've done is, we've tied a color scheme to every elevation in order to ensure no reputation. So here, you have elevation B. Your main brick color is a walnut grove with a savanna gray accent brick. You have a cobblestone hardy plank color, and a raisin front door color. Elevation C will have the Berkshire brick with the Windermere accent brick color. You'll have sailcloth hardy plank along with black fox front door color on the scheme. Elevation E will offer the Ocean Isle main brick color with an Abington accent brick, khaki brown hardy plank, and a Roycroft bronze green front door color. And lastly, elevation F will offer Castle Rock as the main brick color, Old Columbia as the accent, Monterey taupe as your hardy plank color, and Ruckwood dark red as your front door color. And then this was the noise study chart that I had mentioned, and if you'd like, we'd be happy to bring Josh up to further elaborate on your question in regards to interior noise.
Okay, good. Thank you. Nicely done presentation on the architecture. Are you done with that part?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. So let's hear more about the strategies for sound mitigation. It's all yours.
Did you have specific questions? I mean, it might be more beneficial...
My fundamental question is, I know we have published standards for a threshold that you have to attain inside, but I really want to know is, how... that you have to attain inside, but I really want to know is how much better you did than that, and what are the strategies specifically that you're using to get there?
The strategies are, as Jessica outlined, the upgraded windows. Those are, the 32 STC windows from the Plygem series are laminate windows, whereas the standard windows are not. Laminate windows typically offer a higher STC rating. As far as how much lower than 45, I don't have a specific answer. You know, we are asked to design to the 45 limit, so the most I can say is that the noise level in each room throughout the house will be under 45.
So you got there by taking the sound studies from the site, I assume kind of a peak noise level when a train went by? And then you're calculating the STC rating of whatever the proposed wall sections are right now, and that's how you're getting to this answer? Or how did you get there?
We, everything is done around the 24-hour average noise level, which is the LDN. So we take the 24-hour average from the train, and that's what we use to calculate mitigation, how much mitigation you need, or how much mitigation is being provided by the standard building construction, and then also the upgrades that they offer. So it's not the, the standard is not the noise level as the train's going by in that, you know, brief moment.
So how diluted is that average? How do you calculate that?
Duh, duh. The thing that matters is when the train joins them by.
Yeah, you're right.
If a train goes by for five minutes.
Right.
Every three hours, it's more than that. But that would mean the average across three hours is pretty loud.
Correct?
Yeah. So tell me how you calculate it. What is the?
The 24-hour average noise level is just what it sounds like. It's the, you know, we go out there and we measure for a 24-hour period. It includes every train that goes by, and you just take the average noise level that you measure. It does include a 10 decibel penalty for the nighttime hours between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So if a train goes by during the nighttime and it produces a noise level of 75, when we calculate it into the average, it's counted as 85.
Okay.
So that's, that's the real only.
So give me an example. What would a peak noise be of a typical freight train going by? And then, then what is the 24-hour average? Same spot.
The 24-hour average depends on how many trains you have going by.
Yeah, but whatever you're designing, what you're designing to? Let me make it clear.
We're designing the impacts, the highest impact at the Devlin property is about 72 DBA LDN.
Just the average.
Right, the average. The highest noise level, I don't have those numbers on me. I mean, I can, we have those, they're just not included in any report we do because, you know, the city of Gaithersburg noise standards, pretty much every other standard in the area, is that 24-hour average noise level. It's not the maximum noise level.
Okay, so how many, so in that calculation on average, how many incidents within 24 hours was there a noise source?
The times we measured between 35 and 50 trains a day.
So two an hour, roughly.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Is that true through the night, or does it?
Uh, I believe so. I think it was about that. You know, again, the schedule can vary day to day.
Yeah.
I want it something around 11, because I don't live that far from here.
11, I would.
11.
I mean, you're right in that if someone's going to complain, they're probably going to complain about the noise when the train's going by. Unfortunately, that's not the limit.
I don't think I'm in a spot like this. Let me correct. I don't, there's no question, these houses are next to an active rover tractor.
Right.
And there's a lot of development up this leg of the road, especially as you get into Germantown. So it's, there's a lot of precedent for building relatively close to the tracks, despite the fact we're moving in, you know, this particular piece of property isn't being on it. Generally, as you run all the way up that leg, there's quite a bit brought up against it.
Right.
So the question really is more about being able to explain to somebody who's buying the house what to expect, because it's not as if we're blazing new ground here by building close to the tracks. It's more about understanding if they're buying a house with some premium features to help mitigate the noise, to understand what that really means.
Right.
And it's not that it's dense enough to completely shield them from a rushing train at, you know, 2:00 in the morning when they're probably, you know, sound asleep and it's quiet.
Right.
But on the other hand, I think that there needs to be some sense that it's, it's an aggressive enough noise mitigation strategy that it's not going to, it's not going to feel like there isn't any noise mitigation in the house, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And that's, it's hard to quantify that, I realize that. And if you're not doing it all the time, it's hard to even understand what the numbers mean, what an STC rating is, or even what a decibel level is.
Right. I can try to add some further clarification. Standard building construction, vinyl siding, and the 26 STC windows that were mentioned, that gives you about 20 decibels of reduction outdoor to indoor. So, you know, if the train's going by and it's 75 on the outside of the house, it should be about 55 inside. With the upgraded windows and the brick, again, it varies room to room. It's very dependent on the amount of windows you have per room. So, you know, a room with more windows is going to offer less noise reduction than a smaller room with fewer windows.
Well, you're equipped to say 20 is what a typical section is, so what do you think this one's going to track at?
Right. Again, it's going to vary room to room, but between 5 and 10 decibels extra.
That's not much.
It doesn't sound like much, but.
Doesn't sound, yeah.
Thank you. But the decibel scale is longer.
For a train.
There you go. So we say a difference of one decibel is not perceptible. A difference of three decibels is barely perceptible, a difference of five.
Ten is perceptible, no, I recognize that.
Five is clearly perceptible. 10 is, we say it's about twice as quieter, twice as loud.
So I guess not, not sort of data level, but maybe for you guys as well. So what are we going to tell people that are coming onto the site to look at these houses? What's the explanation? Because I know one of the, one of the conditions is going to be something about the transparency.
That's correct. So we will, we have a Parklands disclosure now that we use. We represent both existing and future transportation in the neighborhood. So the CXX line, we represent the future possible CCT line. We also represent the future 270 on and off ramp plus the connection over 355. So per your recommendation, we will be adding to that. I should have that over for approval and review by staff in the next couple of days. Essentially, we will be acknowledging to customers that they are building a new home in close proximity to the tracks. We'll actually call out that the units are anywhere from 65 or more feet away from the unit, and point that out to them. They'll be signing off on it. It's an endowment that's ratified and part of our full sales contract.
Have you been into the houses that are, I mean, right now, the stuff you're building that's just behind this row is not that much farther away?
That's absolutely correct.
In a practical matter.
And as a matter, I actually sold a number of the homes that backed to 270, so the single-family homes, well, they front to 270. They'll be very close to the interchange, and obviously, similar to here, noise is something everyone asks about. You know, between someone coming to visit a model home and writing a sales contract, it's inevitable they're going to hear the train. They'll be in our model home, and they'll see that. One of the easiest ways to show a customer what it may sound like is to take them in a unit that's being built near where they're looking. You know, for example, once we have our first of four townhome buildings up, everyone will walk through that unit under construction, once they can actually see the product being built. We will walk them through it. We do have the advantage here that single families are still going up, and we'll be starting to sell these units later this year. Well, it's not the same to take them in a single-family home, particularly a single-family home that doesn't necessarily have rear mitigation, or upgraded windows is another example.
Okay.
But I agree with you. It's difficult to say this is exactly what it is, and depending if you have a sensitive ear to it or not, it, what may sound eh to one person may sound terrible to another.
We'll get into the discussion more in a bit, but I guess what I was trying to lead up to is, is there really enough of a difference in what you're describing from a standard wall section to what you're providing for the upgrade to help mitigate? Is there really that much difference? And I'm not sure there is or isn't. I mean, it's worth some conversation, but that's what I was trying to get at, is what the real mitigation was. I mean.
It's not enough to make the train inaudible. It does make a difference, though. I mean, if we were to measure how much noise reduction is provided by a standard building versus, you know, the brick and the laminate windows. I mean, it's enough to get you below the required limit, that's for sure.
And there are units out there that are, some are mitigated and some are not, and there, and.
That's, that's correct.
There is a definite difference between one and the other.
I think you're just trying to say that you don't want a misrepresentation of mitigation steps that have been taken. It needs to be much, much clearer for a lay audience, I think I agree with John, that needs to be crystal clear that the mitigation steps you've taken are not solution, they're literally a relatively minor mitigation of a noise nuisance.
They're not, they're not going to get rid of the train noise, but they're meeting the city limit, you know?
Right. A listing of noise makers and then a line that says we've added mitigation pieces isn't enough of an explanation.
And our disclosure to customers actually doesn't even outline what we're doing to mitigate. I think it was originally provided in one of the initial packages, but it will say you are buying a home near, within 65 feet or more of train tracks that will produce noise.
I think that's actually helpful.
You know, it's pretty black and white. It's stating as a matter of fact, the train tracks are there, they will produce noise.
So that's, but that's the, that's sort of the responsibility thing. I get that completely, I'm in favor of that. What I'm really leading up to is that, okay, so here's, here is from our perspective, we're developing a part of the city and trying to guide development in this part of the city that we know has a liability of the noise of the rover tracks. And that's, that's a fact of life. In fact, we're proud of it. We have it running right through our old town, right? But that also means that we have to be very diligent about making the quality of life for these new homes, that we do have control over how they're built. We don't have control over how the rest of the old town is built, to be as good as they possibly can be, knowing that in a modern neighborhood, there are higher expectations for quiet, for quality of construction, for all those things. And so the questions are really leading up to, is this something that is not just good enough, but is really taking the extra step to make sure that the quality of life for the folks that are living that close to the tracks, they have a fighting chance of being, you know, not the worst houses in the neighborhood? That's sort of the point of the questions.
Right.
And I don't know, I don't know if you've answered it yet, I think you did a pretty good job of explaining how you're going to take care of it, but I think part of what our discussion will be is, we need to decide, is it enough?
Is it enough, yeah.
And is there a way to explain that? Yeah, you probably don't want to give the homeowners quantities that they can come back later and say, well, you're off by two or something, and you know, try to be that surgical about it. But I think something that has a margin or has a recognizable, very strong advantage because of the strategies you've taken, either construction or siding or a little bit of both. So it's just something to kind of keep an eye on. We'll get to that discussion. You had a chart, did you want to show that? It was in your slide presentation. Is there anything on there you want to emphasize or highlight for us?
So John, I don't know if you want to highlight on this chart. I know through our conversations, what we ended up deciding was, you had originally told me that some of the units that were further away didn't necessarily require the second upgraded windows, but we ultimately took what was required for the ones closest and adopted that through all units.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the noise impact, as you go further into the site, does drop off a bit, you know, such that these upgrades aren't, you know, either the first upgrade, you know, a lower STC window, or maybe even the standard window would be fine in houses further back to meet the 45 LDN limit. But are now, you know, through talking with NV, they just decided to upgrade all the windows to provide increased mitigation, to, you know, eliminate the potential of a person living next to another person that has better windows. You know, it's, certainly don't want the neighbor finding out that they don't have as good windows as the person next to him, so, yeah, the, I guess, that's the only thing to point out about that, is that they didn't have to do laminate windows for all the units, but they decided to.
And you didn't have to go to fixed sash windows in like the bedrooms or anything where you ordinarily would have offerable ones to satisfy the.
No, we did not. And Josh and I discussed, there was an option of going to a lower rated window on a number of the units as you near the middle of the site. You know, that's when you get into a gray area with representation. Do I want to risk saying, hey, you on unit 13 have this window, but you on unit 18 have another window? The other thing that, you know, makes a difference with a front entry garage unit as well, is a lot of your living space, where your primary living space, is in the rear of the unit, further away from the front of the unit that's absorbing the sound. So for example, you have a front entry garage, so your rec room space is in the rear of the unit. On your main level, your family room is in the rear of the unit, your dining room's up front. In the top unit, your owner's bedroom, owner's suite is in the rear of the unit. Your outdoor living, if you choose the attic level, in the rear of the unit. So we were, you know, it's careful to consider, because most of what's in Parklands right now is a rear entry garage, where in, contrary to this, most of your living space is in the front of the unit.
Sure.
But here, you know, it's certainly an advantage that the areas of the home that you spend most of your time will be in the rear.
John, I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have about three or four questions, and I'll start with the first one, is, will houses be wrapped with some sort of?
We do use house wrap.
You do have, so they all will be wrapped?
Yes.
Okay. Was there some sort of vibration test when, you know, when trains come by? Because that can be a concern as well.
I'm not, you don't do any vibration testing, do you?
Diesel locomotive barreling by, there's going to be vibration. Was there any concern about vibration or any test about vibration, not just noise, but vibration that's going to be generated?
We were never asked to do vibration study. I could check, you know, my company has been involved with the project since 2005, before I was with the company, and we did the original Parkland's noise study. I could check to see if a vibration study was done for that, but.
I would say, Danny, to my knowledge, there has not been a vibration. Excuse me.
That's a concern of mine. And Gary, you had mentioned the height of the fence, 6'5" versus 10", and then you decided to go with 6'5".
Correct.
Can we talk a little bit about why you didn't go with the 10?
The six and a half foot is primarily for look and consistency of what else has been built at Parklands.
Okay.
And that's where we went back to Josh in Phoenix and asked if there is between 10 foot and six and a half for the outdoor noise, did that make a difference? And the answer was no.
It didn't make a difference?
It did not.
I mean, because these are closer, I think these are a little special, so, you know, I was just wondering.
Well, to be specific, though, it does increase, it does allow an increased noise over a 10-foot fence at the first level of the townhomes, right?
Little bit. Honestly, the huge section missing between, you know, you could make.
Because of the gray.
That's where all the noise is coming through, whether it's 10 foot or six and a half feet. Because that section's been removed, there's really no difference.
If you remember from the staff report, I went detail on his report, and it was awesome to exhibit in there as well, but he, it is about one decibel in most places that it is higher. One decibel, though, is not very odd. You don't hear a difference usually within one decibel, even within five decibels. So we definitely at staff level took a lot of look at this, though, about them going down with the six and a half foot fence. The reason we felt it was okay is because it is only about one decibel higher at certain locations.
Right, so it is louder at the first floor, as your report says.
Yeah.
It's just a one-decibelish.
Correct, for some locations, right.
I had, I had one more. Now, have you talked to, you said you talked to existing, did you take some sort of poll and people talk about it, you know, in terms of?
No, I actually, prior to moving into land acquisition, I actually sold in the community, so.
Yeah, I understand you said that.
I just sold a number of those. No, I mean, honestly, it was something that was talked about regularly. It is talked about regularly when we sell. Like I said, I, you can't write a contract short, quick enough to get someone in and out of there without the train going by.
Yeah.
At least once. It is a reality of the community, and it, we're very open about it. You know, just like we sell the positives of the community.
Well, I guess what I was asking was, you know, after they moved in, have you had any experience with folks to ask them about the train noise a little? It, how, I mean, sometimes, my wife grew up, you know, next door to Kennedy Airport, my wife grew up, you know, next door to Kennedy Airport, and, you know, when I went there the first time, when I met her family, you know, after the shock, I mean, her family, and then, you know, I sat straight up in the bed when a plane flew over, but now I'm used to it.
And you get used to it.
But I'm just saying, have they talked about it?
You know, generally, what I found is customers, most customers don't talk about it. When there's something known, right, they know there's a train, they've been in a model home, they're in a friend's house in the neighborhood, and they've heard it, they know what to expect. Honestly, what causes more concern is an unknown. People are concerned about the unknown of what the future interchange will do. So explaining something that's a known, that they can hear and identify and recognize, ultimately becomes much easier. They're in a model home numerous times throughout the process.
Right.
It's normally that unknown thing where they're like, okay, well, when there's an on and off ramp, what will that do to me? That's where it becomes much, much more difficult.
But I guess specifically, I mean, have, you know, you've sold houses and people moved in and they're living and they're, you know, has anyone ever come back and go, wow, this, you know, the noise is not, you know, something I thought it was going to be, or maybe wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be?
For me, no. I haven't had a customer that's come back and complained about the noise afterwards. I've had people acknowledge that it sounded just like it did in the model home.
Well, but that's what, not necessarily complaint, but just any feedback.
Uh, no, not, nothing other than that, it, people compare it to sounding like it did in the model home. When I sold, we were in the model home that was very near the future urban core, and on a lot of those units, the urban core is counting as future mitigation from the mark track, from the CSX tracks. So there, you can really hear it. So the most my customers have ever told me is compared it to what they heard in the model home.
Danny, if I could, if I could interject here, because there were some discussions when we had some public hearings, when he came up from the neighborhood complaining, but it wasn't so much specifically with respect to the train rumbling through as to the horn being blasted.
Okay.
And that was the concern, because the horn comes up randomly, it could be held down for 20 seconds instead of five seconds. And I believe there was going, someone from the city was going to actually inquire of CSX if there could be some predictability or something along those lines.
Isn't that, that's some ongoing conversation that's happened, hasn't it?
Yes, yes.
You guys have been talking to CSX about, and that's across, I think, the whole length of the track as it runs in the city, yeah.
There's quite the testimony in front of us.
And you're correct. The horn is what I know customers have raised concerns, and I, as far as the previous hearings where people did come out, we are aware, the horn is what's been identified as the issue, less the actual train noise. You're correct.
Just want to clarify.
Any other questions for the, are you guys done, by the way?
Oh, yeah.
I was trying to, the explanation for the fence and the fact that there's trees there and it's a fairly dense forest in that particular section, is there a concern or are there other areas, right now where the downtown section's supposed to be, that hasn't been developed yet, there's no fencing around there, if I'm not mistaken?
Around the urban core?
The urban core.
Yeah, they have like chopped off telephone poles, just to prevent construction traffic.
The first structure right next to tracks is the, up to the five-story parking garage.
Right.
So that concrete deck will be the noise mitigation, but that's not there right now.
And that's not much for noise mitigation, more for safety purposes? I mean, you did mention the fact that there is no concern on the part of the city, that people may wander down, or children may wander down there, but the fact is that there is an open space there, you've got two fences, and then suddenly you've got this gap with nothing but woods.
Right.
I looked at the aerials all the way up to Germantown, and surprisingly, once you get past the commercial uses, there are, there's no fencing along, by Bennington, by, all the way up to Germantown, there's no fencing on either side of the railroad tracks.
We fence highways, we don't fence railroads.
Yep.
It's weird.
Unless you have cattle.
Right.
Is there a concern then? I mean, obviously, we're having this discussion right now, and we can possibly set a precedent here, where we may in the future want to require that. We've had a lot of incidents recently.
Yes.
With people crossing a CSX for whatever reason. And there is concern, and if we're building two fences within, what, 60 feet, 80 feet apart, where this gap is, can we not fill in that gap somehow, some way?
Yeah, I have the same concern, although then it really begs the question of looking at the border of the whole, the whole development.
Project running.
And I don't know if there's a need for that or if we should. I was actually more concerned about the section that you guys showed where it was a fairly steep drop-off. So I was imagining not so much intentionally crossing the tracks, all that could happen. I was thinking, well, what if somebody comes up to the edge of that and just basically tumbles by?
It's 24 feet, it's a 24-foot drop.
Well, the slope isn't as bad as I thought, but, you know, it'd be more like that scenario for me, that there'd be people that close to the drop-off all the time, and then the potential for an accident. In an undeveloped area, it should, it hasn't been a problem, obviously, but I don't know, just, it's sort of, that'd be the one concern I'd have, is that point where the road comes very close to the grade change, and, I mean, I don't know, what do you think?
It's that, it's that last 25 feet.
The issue is, does it make us, I mean, there's a very fine line as to where the forestation starts, and so when you start putting up fences, then you're impacting the forestation area.
Well, John, you're really just talking about the last, the last little bit where it's tight against the tracks, right? So this, you're not where there's...
Maybe, yeah.
And wherever the section's... This is a fairly substantial grade difference, and fairly modest.
If you go, Greg, if you go to that section, you can see...
She should be up there now.
Oh, okay. It's not, I don't know if he has to push the button.
Go to this one?
The section they provided you're asking for, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, uh...
It's a drop-off.
Oh, with the fence actually?
So where the, well, no, this is it, and where the road is closest to the tracks.
You're talking about section AA?
You know, I can't tell.
The top section?
I assume that's the one.
You're talking about this area?
Yeah.
But if that's the one that's closest to the, between the road and the...
It is. Yes, and that's taken, if you look at the noise study, it's taken, it's hard to read, I know it's hard to see the cursor, but it's taken right here where those parking spaces are shown.
So there is a fence there.
So it is the fence. The fence unfortunately is not shown, no, on the section.
Right. It's, sorry.
So that's if you go, uh, my, what am I doing?
I'm sorry, that one?
Yeah, if you go, so I think you're talking about maybe extending the fence in this area?
Well, no, I think that's a slight misrepresentation. That red line's not the extended fence, right? The fence actually stops before the curve that road starts.
No, the red line is the fence on the noise graphic. That's where...
Oh, let me see, you're looking at this. Oh, you know what, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the rail. No, I'm looking at the rail, the guard rail.
And that's the other thing which...
The fence doesn't extend past, see, that very faint line there.
There is a, was working with DPW on both ends, left and right, there is a wooden guard rail that they requested.
So this is the guard rail that runs along the road here, and then the fence actually starts here and runs along the property line back here.
Which is, which is extends, I think extends for that entire sort of very tight...
Yeah, that probably protects enough from the incidental balls over the side or something.
Excuse, sorry. Just for our clarification, you, the commission was asking about why there was a fence through the wooden area in the middle. That was for forest conservation reasons. They put a fence in there, it would disrupt their calculations for forest conservation.
Sure. And I'm not, like I said, this is just more of a conversation about when to decide to do something like that when you're that close to the tracks and thinking about safety and whatever might be the case. And I think Trudy also mentioned, as you move up north on the tracks and you get into some of the already developed areas, Germantown, they back up without any real fences, although some of the yards have their own fences, so that's, you know, that's kind of your protection.
Is it, does the HOA provide for allowing a fence to be constructed behind each townhouse individually? In other words, if I, if I wanted a fence in my backyard, in the townhouse, because I have a young child, let's say, many years ago, would I be able to do that?
The dog.
The dog, good, good. Would I be able to do that?
Fences, the single families, which most, all the other townhomes in Parklands are alley-loaded, but fences are allowed, which the front-loaded singles, which are adjacent to this, they do allow fencing. And actually, the fencing that's next to the city park, actually, the site plan, the lots that join the city park and also join the McGowan property, there, there's a, it's either a two or three rail wooden fence that was part of that plan, and that was more of a property demarcation.
Yeah, I thought you pulled a no-build property line up to the back of these townhouses, well, back of the deck.
What do you mean?
There is a building restriction line at the back of the townhomes, but the fence can't approach upon the building restriction line. So they could, they could build a fence up to the property line.
Up to the rear BRL.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only area where that would be different would be lots 13 through 17, and that is because of the HOA parcel that's in the rear, and that is for stormwater management.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the hope is, they don't, I mean, Gary, you know, if you wanted to, you could expand on your very good design for micro bioretention, and I think you did a really great job of putting in some strip bioretention, particularly along this edge that we're talking about, as well as the four ponds that go around the sticks, I think, well, not, they're not ponds, but bioretention. I just thought it was a very good use of current code to make some grade infiltration pieces. I thought it was a good design, so, if you wanted to go through that sheet, I don't know if anybody else cares. I got all excited when I saw it.
I'm more than happy to walk through it if you would like.
No, I guess if no one else has a question, I just think it was a great design, so.
Well, thanks for calling that out, for highlighting that.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Nice and thin, little breaks in the curves.
Any other questions on the application or concerns?
No.
Okay. So, and we noted at the beginning of the meeting that everyone in the audience is from the applicant team, but I will ask, if anybody else has something to add to the present presentation or any clarifications to the discussion? All right. So Gary, or Greg, what is the recommendation from the staff?
Staff recommend to grant SP 6413-2014 final site plan approval, finding compliance with the city's master plan, with the approved schematic development plan, SDP 4560-2014, and sections 24-160D.9C, 24-170, and 24-171 of the city's zoning ordinance with seven conditions.
Let me ask you to clarify, condition number three, where you get into the idea of certifying from a third party that the materials required to mitigate sound, there's going to be clear walls, these are, are they going to actually test the units or test inside the units to see if they're performing and installed correctly?
What they do is they verify that the materials that were installed meet the STC rating that they specified for the units. That kind of piggybacks on condition number two. What they submit to the permitting inspectors is actually, at this, right now for the rest of Parklands, is they submit a photograph of the windows that have the sticker for the STC rating on it. And then they verify, Phoenix verifies again, a second time basically, that these homes are to the minimum requirements for code.
So here's what happens. The guys doing insulation wrap up their work at Friday at 5:00, right? And they leave out a section. You don't know that, because the walls are sealed up in their yard, but what happens is, once the noise, you know, noise source goes by, suddenly the flanking noise to the wall or the penetration is completely compromised, because there's some workmanship issues. So given the sensitivity to this whole attention to mitigating and the fact that it's not particularly, there isn't a huge high margin here, you're sort of hitting some minimums, is it ever in your conditions, when you do these in other locations, to actually create a testing requirement? Maybe a random sample?
One that could always say, double up with a 54-hertz rating that you go and do a blower door on those end units that are the most concerned.
Because my concern is, you're right, you could take a picture of the window with a sticker on it, you can take a picture of the cockgun laying in the corner of the room, but you don't know that either one was used, right?
No, I understand.
And if they aren't used right, even if they're sort of sitting there in the opening, they still may not actually create the STC, because it's an assembly, it's not just the component itself, right?
I don't believe they...
There's a hand going up from the acoustic engineer back there. Just hit the microphone so we can pick it up in the...
All the laminate windows that will be installed, they're all etched laminate in the sash, so there's a way to tell that the window's laminate?
Right, but you don't know that the edges are caulked, you don't know that the insulation was installed in the walls, you don't know...
That's part of our inspection, but...
But that's the point, is that for us to verify it, it really needs to be tested under some condition that proves that the assembly is, has integrity. And that's what I'm getting at.
But that's what they have to do.
And it might be helpful...
But all I'm hearing is a visual inspection, I'm not hearing any kind of testing of...
Yeah, it might be helpful for Josh to walk through that process, that's probably going on at Parklands.
Thanks, I was concerned.
Yeah, right now, Parklands, any home that was impacted by noise above 65 LDN gets an inspection from us after the windows are installed, and then again, when the home is finished. Right now at Parklands, there's no requirement to do actual testing, so that's all that's going on at Parklands right now. Every home, we have inspected every home that has noise impacts, basically.
Right. So you do it when they've, just install the windows and they've gone back and done the rest of the walls, or what's the not following?
We, I think they do it at clo, I'm pretty sure they do it at closing inspection, and then they do it again at final use occupancy, prior to the use occupancy being issued.
Gotcha.
Correct, yeah.
Thanks.
Just in regards to the construction, we do, as a company, hire a third party who does basically inspect every single one of our homes to ensure they're meeting building standards or built property, believe it or not, our project manager would actually get graded on it. So we do do that.
I have no doubt. I have to be clear, I'm not here to indict the quality of your work, it's more of a practical matter, and given the sensitivity of this particular condition, that's all, that's really all I'm getting at, yeah.
But we hope, we hope there's no insulation that's not going up overnight, but we do have pre-drywall inspections with our customers, so we do give them the right to walk through the home and see it and bring a third-party inspector prior to drywall going up, so, not that it gets rid of it, but the fact that the homeowner themselves has a chance to walk through and see that insulation up and everything in, prior to, always helps.
Good to hear. Not everybody does that.
Yeah, we encourage our homeowners, obviously, with being a company, to actually see the home and go through while it's being built, versus keeping them out from start to finish.
Yeah, great. All right, any other questions on the conditions or concerns?
Yeah.
All right. So we've got a pretty BP inspection protocol, you guys happy with that?
Yeah.
Thank you for that explanation.
I think there's enormous benefit to the energy efficiency standards.
Absolutely.
Going that low, high, or wherever you want to look at it, along with that, becomes, you know, relatively your tight skin for residential construction and, you know, a higher level of care for the concerns that you're having. Makes you feel much better.
Okay.
Now, I'd caveat empty, but the buyer beware. That's the best thing to say. You've done everything, you've done your due diligence, you do your inspections, you've upgraded.
Yeah, enough.
I just, well, you know, but to the minimum, but nevertheless, it's been done. And there is a difference between this product and the previous products, and there are no options here. It's been upgraded, and I don't think we could ask anymore.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I was thinking about asking, did that fence go all the way across, but it sounds like the impact on the decibels would be de minimis, so...
They actually have a pretty good view, don't they, right? Because all that, all those woods are there.
They do. The downside to a fence going all the way across is that everyone complains and took away their, their worst view.
Take the fence out.
Except for about five minutes every other hour or so, when, you know...
Well, in the winter time, I get to see the trains going by, and summer is different. It mitigates even more so.
The basketball, or the football, or the lacrosse ball that rolls down the hill, but you can't...
Well, what I also trust is it's, it is a neighborhood, it's a fairly tight, tightly-done HOA organization, so over time, if there does, does some problems emerge with that or something, there's some issues, I'm sure there could be some conversation about fences or something.
Well, they have other playgrounds in the neighborhood, so...
And one fairly close to these, behind in the single families, which is nice.
Very good.
All right.
I just did want to say that I appreciate the thoroughness of your explanation and your presentation tonight, and providing us with the details of the products that will be used in this construction. I appreciate that.
We appreciate that.
And I will emphasize, I know we sounded like we were kind of grilling you about the acoustics, especially to your poor engineer back there. But just to be clear about how that all comes together, because like I said, I think what we want to make sure is that there isn't any, that we take every opportunity we can to make sure the quality of life in these houses are every bit as good as the rest of the neighborhood. And, you know, we know the pressure's on to build up close to the rover tracks because it's the last available sites out there, and frankly, it's going to be a great neighborhood. I mean, I think, I think folks are going to really enjoy living even that close to the tracks because the neighborhood's going to be so good. So we just want to make absolutely certain that that's all being taken care of. And I have to tell you, the presentation that you all did, I think answered it very well, very well, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
Any other concerns? I think we have recommendation for approval with six conditions. I don't, I'm not recommending we change the third-
Seven conditions.
Or seven? Seven. I'm not recommending we change the third, even though I asked about the testing piece. I think the inspection protocol sounded thorough enough.
Yeah. I had a concern about that, I'm glad you brought it up, but yeah, I'm satisfied.
Are you okay with the migrations?
I'm okay, well, I was just thinking about like the Flintstones and Joe Rocket, like the-
We're not supposed to know what's going on. I might just add, just a couple comments, the architecture's nice, I think the detailing is reserved, and, you know, we like eclectic architecture as well as traditional architecture, but when traditional architecture is done, we want it to be done simply and a little towards what that original design aesthetic was meant to be, and this appears to be that.
Thank you.
Good lentils, good soldier courses, really looks good.
All right, very good. So I think with that, we're ready for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve SP 6413-2014 final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with the city's master plans, schematic development plan, SDP 4560-2014, and 24-160D.9C, 24-170, and 24-171 of the city's zoning ordinance with the seven conditions as read into the record.
Second. Do you move in second at all, unclear, please say aye. Aye, closed. Passage to the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, look forward to seeing all that come out of the ground. All right, that takes us to, from the commission. Lloyd, can I start?
Everybody be safe tomorrow, we're going to have some snow, I think, and again-
You can bet the city trucks will be on top.
The city trucks will be out there tonight, probably.
We'll have no excuse to stay home.
Probably be woken up early, no doubt. But, no, seriously, the city's been doing a marvelous job so far this winter, it's been a very difficult winter for everybody, and it's appreciated and recognized, and I think we all do on the commission, recognizing the great work that's been done by the city.
That'll be time to start fixing potholes, right?
Well, I could say that the only thing we're worried about in the sleepless architects community is the potential of the snow load line, moving a little further south, and then suddenly us having a lot of snow conditions down here that's another 20, another 40 pounds square foot higher, with a bunch of old roofs that haven't had to meet that criteria. I think that's our current sort of keeping us up at night.
What about the frost line, that doesn't bother you? Is the frost line?
Frost lines, it will start dropping, but frankly, we're okay. The line for that's way higher. Our snow load is like right at the Mason Dixon line.
Wow, interesting.
It should move north, but like, you know, a couple winters, it'll move south, we're in trouble, but I'm sure it'll be fine.
Well, timely, because I think on the strategic plan that Marty's going to talk about, we're looking at adopting the new, the-
2015.
2015 building code, right?
Yeah. The really great one, I won't go into it.
I won't pontificate. For now, I'll be quiet.
Gary, anything to add?
No, nothing to add.
Danny?
Yeah, just in light of recent Department of Justice reports that we heard tonight, and if you haven't heard it, they were very startling, and disheartening, but I'm encouraged that with the transparency, and I think the forthrightness that the city of Gatensburg displays, I'm encouraged, and I hope that that, our model will spread to some of these areas who are struggling with these issues of concern for all of us. That's it.
No government.
All right, good. So I guess next would be from the staff. Marty, do you want to jump in on the strategic plan, or?
Sure. Mr. Chair, as you all received yesterday, you should have received an email from me, and I want to thank Trudy for reminding me to bring you all into that. You all are well aware that I'm fairly new to the system in Gatensburg, and so-
Still on the honeymoon.
Still on the honeymoon.
She's keeping me in line. But I wanted to start out the discussion by telling this board that next year, as we go through the fiscal year 17, I would like the conversation to start probably around the holidays, and get some ideas from the planning commission on the department's strategy and goals going forward. We have an opportunity to somewhat, you know, determine those ourselves as a department. Some of those are kind of set from year to year, but specifically as it relates to our work plan, there is some room for input. And now that I know the system and know what's expected and kind of the timeline, I will definitely try to be bringing the planning commission in on some of that. I would suggest that maybe I start that out through email in the latter part of the year, the calendar year, and then if the planning commission would like, we could do a, you know, work session at the end of one of the meetings or something like that to talk about those issues. So I'll, we'll talk about, more about that at the end of the calendar year and get some ideas from you all. So with that being said, I wanted to go over what is in the fiscal year 2016 action items for the department, and I'll just really quickly read through those. The first one was to update the historic preservation ordinances and evaluate historic district commission rules and procedures, and prepare a draft of the historic preservation element of our master plan. You all are well aware of the city's master plan, and we try to update that on a cycle. We just went through the whole process for the environmental element. That was actually the last element of the last master plan.
2009.
2009 master plan. So now we're ready to start all over again and go through the cycle. The first element and the oldest element of our current master plan is the historic preservation. We now have a new historic preservation planner on board, so that is the element that we'll be tackling this coming year, and I'm sure there'll be some room for input from this commission.
You'll get some input.
The historic district commission will be very involved in that as well, so. But that is one of our action items. The second is to participate in the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, round nine cooperative forecast for households, population, and employment. That is something that we give input to. We provide data, we tweak, you know, numbers that come out of that, and it's a report that's put out and by the COGS.
Really essential report.
It is, for both economic forecasting and for planning purposes, so.
You use it on the private side all the time.
Yeah, so we will be very involved in that, Kirk Eby out of our offices on one of the committees for that, and we'll be working through that process. The third is, that has been mentioned, is the 2015 national building codes. These are all of the codes, so it sounds, it's a very short sentence, but it's a lot of work that goes into those. And those of you who've been through that process before know that we don't just say, okay, this is what the ICC put out and we're going to adopt it. There's amendments, there's, you know, locality-specific portions of that that go into it, and so those are, that's quite an in-depth process for our building code folks. The fourth is one of Trudy's babies, and that's an update to adopt the floodplain ordinance. We're working on that, and we have a work session scheduled for that, Trudy, what day?
March 30.
March 30, so.
That's not, it's for chapter 10, so you're welcome to come to the work session, but it's not a joint work session.
But it promises to be a fun time to spend the night.
Not to be missed by anyone.
The fifth is to complete the city's bus rapid transit BRT study for Frederick Avenue corridor. This is the city's portion of the state's study that we're focusing on, some of the constrained elements of our part of 355. We're currently going through interviews right now and hope to have that under contract in the next couple weeks with the kickoff meeting in early April.
Wasn't some part of that to be done, there was a grant available that the city got for some of that, or is, I'm thinking of another study or another?
That was for the circulator bus.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was a different project, and that one has been completed, that report is out. And then moving on, we'll update and amend the wireless telecommunications ordinance, and again, there's a work session on that.
March 23.
March 23. And that is a joint work session, it's not, I think that is a joint work session.
Yes.
Yep. And again, that is one that is being, you know, kind of precipitated by the feds adopting some new rules for some small cell, you know, and basically putting us into a situation where we're working on a timeline where if we don't work applications through in a certain time period, then the, as the rules are now written and being published, they automatically are approved if we don't work them through in a certain amount of time. We're hoping that that doesn't end up as the final rules, but that's the way they're written right now, so. We needed to change some cell tower and some telecommunications stuff in our code anyway, so we're taking this opportunity to kind of get a jump on that. And then we'll be producing a report studying the economic costs and benefits of historic preservation and redevelopment in the city. That's something that our historic planner will be taking on as well. And then as you-
Is that macroeconomic, is it, you know, you're talking about just the actual physical hard costs of?
You know, we haven't totally scoped it out yet, so if you have some ideas or would like a certain outcome, we can definitely try to see, you know, if that's going to be possible. I think the main thought is, as we have a lot of properties coming into our 50-year-old standards, you know, 60s-era bungalows will be under our 50-year envelope soon here, if not already. So we're looking at, you know, what are the pros and cons of, you know, listing some of those.
Qualifiable business advantages, there are placemaking advantages.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's interesting, you know, gosh, Glenn Danning was governor when, you know, the Smart Growth Office was established, and a big chunk of that was preservation. That was, you know, big commitment. That and-
Preservation for placemaking.
Yeah, well, and, you know, there was the resource preservation, I mean, there was a value to saving structures instead of not, and preserving them instead of letting go. There's all of these sort of, these things, and I feel like at that time, there was a real high awareness to what that all meant, where you plugged in economic development in legitimate ways. And I don't know if that, I don't even know how active that office still is, or what's been going on at that level, but when it was introduced-
It did get dragged out back in shop.
It feels, if not shot, it was left in the trailer. But the point is, I think there is some great information from then that might spur some of what you're talking about, ideas of where to look.
What we're finding, I think on a national level, is that a lot of communities that didn't think of themselves as having historic elements, you know, maybe they were built in the 50s and 60s and 40s post-war, they're now finding themselves under that umbrella of being eligible for listing, and so, you know, how does that impact, you know, redevelopment and those opportunities? So we'll be, you'll be hearing more about that study, I'm sure, going forward. And then lastly, you've been involved in the CD zone over the last year or two, and we did take that to a joint work session and got some guidance on moving forward with some public participation, so we'll be, we'll be working on that. Additionally, and it's not listed on our action items, but I did get direction from council, from mayor and council on Monday night, to have staff go ahead and work on some options for allowing accessory dwelling units within our R90 zone. That came out of a citizen's request, and we basically took some preliminary information to the city council, and they want us to go ahead and kind of explore what that would mean. If we, if we get, you know, some positive feedback from the neighborhoods that it will be affected, we'll be working on a draft ordinance, that will be something that we'll definitely want planning commission's input on, and probably a work session, and ultimately a joint work session. So we feel like we, the first thing we're going to do is go out and reach out to these 2,500 homeowners that are out there, is owned our R90 currently, so we'll be getting that feedback first. But that's something that, you know, had we gotten that direction a couple weeks ago, it would have been on this list, but it's now being added into our-
Yeah, and there's some emerging, you know, prefab things on, you know, elderly housing, things like that, temporary housing things, the strategy people are trying out now, I think, that weren't part of that, part of that discussion when these neighborhoods were established and accessory structures meant like a whole other apartment or a whole other building on the site or something. Interesting to say, I guess.
So that's what we've got in our work plan as it stands currently, but I wanted to kind of at least bring you in, go live after the fact, and promise better work next year as far as bringing you all on board sooner.
Just give us your wish list and we'll say okay. Get what you want.
Excellent, all right, thank you. Anything else? Trudy, go.
If I can get the screen up on the camera for us, thank you. The Department of Public Works wanted the planning commission to be aware that they will be working on a new sidewalk along Odenhall Avenue. As you may or may not know, when the Lake Forest Mall was developed, it was very much a traffic-oriented development. And so we are working to get sidewalks around the mall, so this is one step that will be going on during the spring, and they just received approval from the mayor and council to approve a contract for that.
That's really great.
That's super, because I was just over there to Sears, and there are people who just trapez through the parking lot all the time, going over to the transit center, and that's, this is really going to be a great improvement.
Actually, it's funny, because, you know, what always hits home for me here is, at the end of the Labor Day Parade, we're trying to get back to where everybody parks, and you're walking along the little grass, you know, kind of meeting-
Teetering, yeah.
It still is not going to be on Russell Avenue, but we're getting there, getting around.
Right.
That's the one thing I do, when I first moved to this area 30 years ago, I'm like, there are no sidewalks.
So now that you have sidewalks around Lake Forest, how about the rest of Lake Forest?
We're a big fish.
There is a joint public hearing on Monday, the March 16, on the SDP 6905-2015, on the Metamune Child Care Facility. And right now, we have all five of you coming. And then our next planning commission meeting would be two days later on March 18. And as we mentioned, we do have the joint work session on the telecommunications on the 23.
Is the Metamune Child Care thing, is that going to be a separate building, or is it because of uses being added?
It's a separate building, it's in, actually in the Meadows area, so it's in their area that they have not developed yet, so closer to Quins Orchard Park development.
And I would encourage you, as soon as you get those materials, it's actually a really cool building.
Oh, great.
They're doing a really good, transit-sensitive, it's going to be a great place for those kids.
And lastly, just to piggyback on what Marty was saying, one of the sessions that we've talked to the Maryland Association of Historic Preservation Commissions is doing a training session which is called Modernism for the Historic Districts. And so it will talk about this whole thing, about the newer homes from the 50s and the 60s becoming part of historic preservation.
Very good. Everybody? All right, thank you. Anything else, anybody?
Well, the only thing I would say is, working with Marty and planning staff on some of the items he mentioned, including telecommunications, and one of the things he pointed out was the federal rules, some of which have been proposed and are expected, but also technology itself has led to some of it regarding the small cells, because when we think about telecommunications, you may be thinking about monopoles and things like that, but now it's gotten not so much as trying to increase the bandwidth so much as increase capacity of what they already have. And that is requiring what they're calling small cells all over, so. And we're not the only municipality being approached with it, but our zoning doesn't allow for it at all right now, so. So that's part of what we'll be looking out to.
Well, I guess there was the experiment that Google did about doing small cell for free throughout, you know, whatever town it was.
Nashville? It was somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, and others began to talk about how, and municipalities talking about providing it in their urban cores.
Just doing it automatically, right?
Yeah, as an amenity for people that are doing business, they're just visiting. Interesting stuff. All right, is, there's nothing else with that train whistle?
Just the horn.
You have a good evening, right there.